The Zarnin Board Appeals Harrison Township July 12th, 2022 meeting will come to order. First item in the business is roll call. Mr. Batante, will you do the roll call, please?
Ah, yes. Ms. Thorp?
Present.
Mr. Baca?
Present.
Mr. Lyle?
Here.
Mr. Brado?
Here.
Bill Batante is here.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written this evening?
So moved.
Is there support for the motion? Support. Uh, motion by Mr. Brado, I'm sorry, um, yeah, Mr. Brado, supported by Mr. Baca. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, meeting agenda is approved. Next item is, is the approval of the, uh, meeting minutes. Board members in your packet, you'll find the June 14th, 2022 meeting minutes. Any changes to page one? Any changes to page two? Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written?
So moved.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Thorp, supported by Mr. Baca. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is hearings and views. Uh, Mr. Batante, will you read the first case this evening?
Ah, yes. This is case number, uh, 1022ZBA, uh, related to, uh, 38023 Cherry Lane, requesting a variance from section five point two, 5.02, allowing for a detached garage built on the property. Uh, there's, um, several, um, items listed, those setbacks are as follows. Rear yard, uh, 10 foot, side yard 2.6, setback to the house 4.6. Required setbacks are as followed. Rear yard 30 feet, side yard four, setback to the house 10. Required variances are as follows. 20-foot, uh, rear yard variance, 1.6 inches. Side yard 5.6 inch to the house.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Batante. Is there representative of Mr. Jermelowicz?
Jermelowicz.
Jermelowicz, yes. So you want to come to the podium, give us your name and address, to make sure the request this evening?
Hi, I'm Harold Jermelowicz. My address is 38023 Cherry Lane in Harrison Township. I've owned the home since I've been 23 years old. I've been there, so I would like to get a variance to build a garage. I don't know if you have any questions or...
Yeah, well, uh, why not just give us, um, how you ended up building it like this? Are you designing like this or...?
Um, I, I have a contractor that is going to build the garage for me, so, um, the design, I, I would like to be able to get a couple of cars in there is what I'd like to be able to do, and then put the rest of my lawnmower and stuff like that in my garage. And Cherry Lane is a very dusty road. You know, I've lived there for over 40-some years. To keep anything outside is just, it's always full of dust. I mean, when they grade the road, it's dusty. I know they put down calcium chloride once, a couple of times a year, whatever they do, but, um, and if I ever have anybody over, it's kind of tough. And I'd like to be able to pull cars in the, in the garage and then, and then, uh, you know, so they don't fall on the street.
Okay. Board members, do I question for Mr. Jermelowicz? You can just call me Harry, sir, if you'd like.
Okay.
That makes it easy. A little informal, but Harry, okay? Board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
Sir, the variance you're requesting would put you 2 feet 6 inches from your neighbor's property line on the right.
Yes.
Are your neighbors in agreement with that? That's really close.
I've never heard, they, they've got bushes within... Their backyard, you can't even see from my side or their side. They have bushes that are probably 10, 12 foot tall, and, and they go all the way back almost to the canal right now. Yeah, no, I, I have no...
Pardon? They don't have any issue with this?
No. I mean, the letters were sent out. The neighbor behind me has just built a garage similar to what I'm doing, uh, last year on Mass Street. His neighbor is Eric, and, um, he went for the 10-foot off the seawall, the variant, and, um, you guys granted that, um, that neighbor there, all the neighbors around me, I've known forever. I've been there longer than anybody, so, I mean, I, I've had no complaints. The house next door to me is kind of vacant right now, I believe.
Okay.
So, the, the guy who owns that house, I've never met him. I know they had renters for quite a few years, and I believe they didn't pay rent for quite a while, and I don't know if they got booted out or what, but he's had a shed in his driveway or storage been there for so, close to a year now.
Now, um, you showed your drawing, the 4 foot 6 inch, um, distance between the new, um, garage and the house. That's supposed to be 10 foot, I thought, is the, the normal, uh, distance between, uh, structures. And is that correct? Is it still, it's still 10 foot?
Yeah, that's, that's, it's in the, I outlined that in the paperwork.
Mr. Chair, I think just for clarity, um, the meeting agenda actually calls that as a 4 foot 6 inch variance.
Right, right. So it's 5 foot 6.
Five foot 6, so the official's letter was right. It was just the, um, our agenda had that dimension.
Oh, okay.
It's 5 foot 6.
Okay, yes. Just wanted to pick that up. Could the new garage be attached to the house? Pardon? Could the new garage be attached to the house?
Well, I, I don't know, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I don't know what I would gain by attaching it to the house, to be honest with you. And only partial of it would be, uh, at, at, at that point, I, I, what would, um, I don't know what I would gain, to be honest with you.
It would allow you to have a wider garage, or at least, um, eliminate the side yard variance that's required?
Are there bedrooms on that side of the house?
Oh, yeah, there is.
Couldn't do that, then. You can't have a garage going into a bedroom.
Understood.
My, my concern is that there's three, we're asking for three variances, right?
At least, yeah.
Not one, three, so that's concerning.
When, when he did the same for Eric, uh, the house behind him, he got rear yard, side yard, and to his house.
Didn't he say?
And I'm not trying to, to give you a, a heart rate or anything, but, um, yeah, I have to speak. I mean, the lots are small, and my, my lot does go... My lot is actually bigger on my plot than what it is actually physically because of the canal, which was probably a drainage cut at one time, and was probably a lot smaller. My property line literally goes out, I want to say 3 foot off of my neighbor's seawall in the back. Okay, so I, I've lost a few feet, and I have the proper footage of the land shown on the drawing now, but I've probably lost 15 feet in the backyard from water, so, I mean, I've been there a long time. I, I, you know, I, I take care of my house, always have. I've been a good, good resident, and, uh, I'd just like to be able to take and put some of my things in there and, and keep my car in the garage. And I do, I literally rent space to keep a car. I can't leave it outside because it'd be all white and dusty over there. And because Metro owns half of the street, I know they're never going to pave it, you know, because you have to have 51% of the people, obviously, to vote to get that, so. I know I'm a little bit close to the house, but it's only, I believe it's 9 feet, 10 feet from the back of the house coming up. I'll have that closeness in that little area. Um, the houses on both sides of me are a lot larger, and they're, I don't know if he's got a variant. He built so long ago, it's been so long, I can't tell you. The, the other home, I don't know what's going to happen to that, but that's, that's going to be in pretty rough state, but, but, um...
I see there's already a variance on the other side. It's 3 feet and it should go 4.
Well, that house was built in, in 1928. The original structure was built in 28. My house there, and, and what they did back then, I, I don't know. Um, that foot and a half that they show on, on the other side of the house is not the property line. I'd, I put a decorative fence up, you know, like a horse fence with the wood and the, and, and when I had my guy, he was measuring, making drawings. He measured from the fence over, so, I mean, I have a 50-foot lot, but...
On your drawing, sir, you show 3 feet between your house and the property line on the other side.
The other side? Yeah, I don't know, it could be right.
Oh, then it's up to 50, so...
Is the total up to 50, so then that's where it is? You know, close to the water, too, like 10 feet off the seawall.
I, I got a question for the applicant. So, um, I'm still struggling with, with much of the variances that you're requesting here. You have control over probably not putting yourself in a position to even ask for any. So I, I'm still struggling with hardship.
Oh, you mean build a garage and get smaller, and then I don't...
You could move the garage for, close to the street, and the rear yard setback is no longer required. I mean, there's things that, um, but I'm just saying, observation at this point.
If I went, if I went close to the street, I, I don't have the room in front of the house to do that.
Says 58 feet to the street.
Oh, from the front, from the front of where, where it's going to build? But not from the front of the house to the street, what is it?
31 and a half.
It's 31 and a half feet, yeah.
Brett, what's the front yard setback for a garage?
This is a non-conforming lot, so we would actually have to have the calculations of the two lots on either side.
From the adjacent lots.
Yeah, to be technical.
Mark, can we add to something, though? You know, to bring, bring the garage forward, and maybe we just have a canopy or something so they're attached so we don't have to follow that 10-foot rule, we don't have to bring a variance there?
So what, what is, uh, the rule on the side, what does that do? I mean, if I put a... Can you put a briefway in between, or, I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand how...
I, I think what they're saying is you're in control of this garage. It's not, it's not an existing structure, so you could build it smaller, you could move it somewhere, you know,
In a different spot.
In a different position on a lot.
If, if I'm building a garage, I would like it to be, hopefully be adequate where I could put two vehicles in it side by side. If I put, uh, let's say I build a 16-foot garage, and, and right now I have 5 feet, let's say, let's take 5 foot off of 18 feet. Now I'm building a 15-foot garage, do I have to pull one car in and then be able to pull another one out, or? I, I, at that point, it's not going to really be functional where I can get two vehicles in there without... I mean, I, I drive a truck to begin with, and, and it's a big vehicle, but if I do narrow that down like that, I'm going to have, I'm going to have a one-car garage.
I don't think anyone is suggesting that.
No, no, but I'm just saying, but you're talking about the offsets, and if I, and if I go forward, then I'm losing my driveway. So at that point, I, I wouldn't like to keep as much drive as I possibly could. I mean, the street is, it's, it's unpaved, so it's muddy, and it's icy, and it's lousy in the winter time, and it's dusty all summer long, but...
Brett, could you just, um, could you elaborate on what, what is the rationale for the 10-foot separation between house and garage? What drives that, that logic?
It's just our ordinance. I assume that it's for fire. However, the residential code doesn't say that this is a violation. Usually it's 5 feet to a house to house, but if they're on the same lot, a detached accessory structure could be closer to residential code. So, code says it's okay, the ordinance says 10 feet.
Right, and, and we're, we're here because of the ordinance, respect.
Well, I just, sort of get to a resolution on this. I'm comfortable with the 2 foot 6 inch side, side setback. I think we're too close to the water. I, I think...
You have granted my neighbor the same thing, and I'm not, I'm not...
We have no documentation to support that.
I have.
It's in front of us.
Would like to see it, is it okay later?
Yeah, you can approach.
10-foot backyard right here. Rear yard setback was 10 feet. It's 10 feet off the seawall, and it's, I mean, uh, 26, right here. He's 10 foot, 3 foot, and he's 9 foot off his building. And his, his name and everything is right on this, so...
You said it was on Mass?
Yeah, he's right behind me, directly behind me. Actually, it was laying when he did, he tore down the old one, and he was getting pretty recent.
His is, it's attached?
No, he's not attached. He's got a, he's got a deck in between his house and his.
So his is 20 by 24?
Uh, I...
Pad there?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment on the board.
So, when, when you look down the canal, and there's, you know, you can't take measurements, you can't get in all the yards, but it was, it was clear to me that there were a fair number of structures that were closer than the requirement to the canal, without a doubt. And that's just a general observation, looking down the canal on both sides of, you know, on this gentleman's side and then the other side of the street. I'm just making an observation.
We have a bridge on our canal, and...
Okay, any other comments from the, uh, the owner? Any questions for the owner? Does anybody else in the, the audience like to speak to this case this evening?
So, you're saying it's consistent?
I was just going to answer a question, Mr. Brado. I'm not, I'm not saying it's consistent. My, my observation from looking down the canal was that there were, I didn't count the number of structures, but there were certainly a fair number of, that were, would appear to be fairly close to the canal.
I'm wondering if it makes sense for the applicant to come back with a copy of that, that packet, because we don't have the full information there, what was approved, etc., from the previous mast location, and maybe clarify what, what, uh, how his property is similar to the mast property, and why he should be awarded a variance? Because I'm not sure we have all the information we need to make an informed decision this evening.
So that means I would have to wait another month, is that what you're saying?
Discussing it up here?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just asking if possible.
Well, it appeared to me the other garage was 20 by 24.
Okay.
This is 18 by 30. So, this is, you know, more rectangular, the other one was a little more square. It looked like it was attached, it wasn't, but it looked like it was pretty, pretty close, uh, closer than, than this one to the home. I can't recall ever having a case like this where we had three variances in one case.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been a long time if we have.
Well, I'm just wondering what, what we do as far as the next step, and frankly, if the Mallett's property turned out to be the same or similar, I'd be much more comfortable with granting some of these variances. I'm not right now. I'm just kind of voicing, you know, my opinion on this.
And Brett, the, the, um, the proportion of the garage to the home is that... Because the home, to me, it says it's 22 by 41, the garage is 18 by 30. I mean, the garage is almost the same size as the house, is that...
No, it's quite a bit smaller. It's, it's, a house is 900 square feet, as, as far as the floor, floor plate, and the, um, the new proposed garage is, I don't know what I do, um, 600 minus 36.
Okay, so, to, and I know garages are supposed to be a percentage of the home.
He's allowed 604 square feet.
604?
He's proposing 540.
Okay, so we're good there?
Yes.
That was my, my question, so we're good there?
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I, I have none.
Any question, any other?
The only thing I can say about the other project, I do know that there is a variance that was granted over there. Trying to look up the information, I can't tell you what the three were, but it's a very similar lot. They're all 50-foot lots over there, the canals in, um...
Similar house.
You know?
Yeah, it's similar house, and don't know the details.
Yeah, and that's, that's...
They look identical, only his is a little bit longer, I think, than this house is.
Yeah, Brett, unfortunately, the devil's in the details, you know, just a little bit of change from site to site, can we...
About how long ago, Mr. Jermelowicz? About how long ago was that mast house approved?
Oh, that was approved last year. I think he rebuilt that last year, I'm positive, but it was last summer.
It's on mast or Mallett's?
Is it Mallett's?
Uh, whatever the street is, is a mast or mast court behind me. The next street from Cherry Lane going south.
It's the home directly across the canal from you.
He's on Mallett's.
Well, Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman, I likewise don't feel comfortable as of today making a decision in this case if, in fact, the applicant, um, when we can find the information about the, the structure on Mallett's, I'd like to review that prior to making a decision.
Do you, the information, if I don't mind? You want the square footage and all the good stuff? The setbacks right here, the side setbacks here?
I'd prefer, Brett, this is something that your department can pull that for us. I'd rather the building department provide that information. On the other hand, I guess you, you have as an option, because as you had said, that certainly would, um, push back your project a month, and your other option could be, if you don't want to wait a month, you can let this board decide right now on what we have in front of us.
Okay. I mean, I, I'd rather not wait a month, to be honest with you, because I don't know what's going to happen then. You know, time's a-wastin', summer's going by quick, so...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that we be consistent in similar situations. I, I think that's important.
Right.
Would you agree?
Yes.
And I believe that it, you know, had we had that information tonight, we might have been able to look at it more clearly, but I think it's critical that, um, e- even though it represents a delay, I think it's critical that we be reasonably consistent in our opinions. And sir, I don't want to see you delayed, but, and I, I don't think I can make a recommendation to you, but, um, I, I think it's prudent to evaluate, have us, the board do the evaluation, and come back at the next meeting with fuller information prior to making that decision. I would hope that we could do that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, do we have the authority to table ourselves?
Oh, yeah. Okay, we've, we've heard from the applicant, um, there's no one in the audience wants to speak to this case. Unless there's objection, we'll close the public, uh, discussion portion of the meeting and go into board, uh, board discussion. Any, uh, discussion, board members, or any, um, motions, or any changes that we need to consider?
I agree with Mr. Batante about consistency and precedent. If we, if we have a precedent here, it should be considered.
Okay. Any other comments or motions this evening?
Would, could you look that up on your case number?
I'm, I'm trying to find it. I can't, it can't store system.
It's right here, not, not the, below anybody, what, what, I don't know if that would help you at all. Up in the top here with that.
Unfortunately, I can't get connected to this decision, so...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any motions to see?
For what it's worth, this site plan is right, from what I can remember. I mean, it's real close, because, uh... Again, you know, if you guys want to table it wherever, it's, it's up to you guys, but we do have the group site.
But you, you feel comfortable with that drawing?
Yeah.
Board members, is there a motion, discussion, where we go with this?
I think there still would be value in this board. If that is going to be a precedent that they, which is fair, which is to rely on, I would have found it beneficial that I could have taken the opportunity to walk that property also to understand how that precedent may have, may not have been derived.
And I think this may not be the only property like that. We may find that there might be a couple of additionals that might go a different way. But I think, I think we need to have the information in front of us in order to make an informed decision. Okay, board members, I'll ask again, is there a motion this evening? To the table, if you continue hearing this?
I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to table this, um, until the next meeting, um, so that we can get further information and walk the, the lot line on Mallett's to determine whether the variances and setbacks are consistent with what this petitioner is requesting.
Is there support for the motion?
I will support it.
Postman, Mr. Brado, supporter of Ms. uh, Mrs. Thorp. Any discussion of motion? Hearing, uh, Mr. Batante, will you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Ms. Thorp?
Yes.
Mr. Baca?
Yes.
Mr. Lyle?
Yes.
Bill Batante?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to table your, um, your request for a month until we get the information, um...
Is there anything that I can do, or you can just pick, get the information that you already have?
What you might want to do to support your case is also get some information about the other properties on your street. You know, we, we heard from, uh, Mr. Batante about, you know... the other properties on your street. You know, we heard from Mr. Batante about, you know, or Mr. Bocci, I believe, that was the ten-foot, he had some consistency in the neighborhood. So it's not just the Malice property, it's the other properties too. I'm sorry, sir?
I said that property is directly behind you, the ten-foot.
Right, and maybe other properties that are similarly situated. You just want to have to show that that's not the only one. It's support your case.
Mr. Batante's comment was that looking down the canal, he saw more than just one.
Yeah, the canal goes halfway.
Close to the canal.
And a lot of the homes down on the other side are new, they're different. You know, my house has been there since, like I said, eighteen twenty-eight, twenty-nine, maybe. Cottage built originally at that time, so, I mean, all the newer homes are a little bit different. The home alongside me, the garages are built up front, but they're brand-new homes. I mean, they were designed that way.
Okay, so we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Batante, with the next item?
So, case number eleven dash twenty-two.
Can we vote, can we?
I'm sorry?
Can we vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was unanimous to table tonight's meeting. This is case number eleven dash twenty-two dash ZBA, rear yard setback, variance. This is an applicant petitioning to build a fireplace, a fireplace bar area countertop within thirty feet of a C-wall in violation and get a variance of the non-obscuring requirements set forth in section six point zero one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Batante. Is there a representative of the?
This is?
Or is it ZLM?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you want to give us your name and address in the process evening, if you want to request?
Good evening, my name is John Sarkony. I'm with ZLM Services. Our business address is nine four two two Marine City Highway. The address in question tonight is three seven six eight five Lakeville. We're here before you tonight. I also have the homeowners with me tonight. Asking for a variance so that we can construct a backyard patio with a pavilion, a bar, and an outdoor kitchen fireplace or fire pit area. My understanding is that the ordinance as written says that you can't be within thirty feet of the water with an elevated structure that could obscure the sightline. Unfortunately for the homeowner in this case, there's only, from the closest point of his house to the water is only thirty-six feet. So that six feet of usable space doesn't give us a whole lot of room to construct what we've proposed in this case.
Okay. Board members, questions for the applicant this evening?
Sir, in your letter up until tonight, you say that the patio will be raised to point two feet six inches.
Correct.
And on top of that, the retaining wall another three feet six inches.
Correct.
Correct? For a total of six feet.
To the top, top of bar, yes. That's correct.
To the top, six feet of impervious material?
Pervious. It's a pervious material.
Did I say it wrong?
Well, I couldn't hear you, but it's a pervious material, so water goes through the pavers.
Oh, it is pervious.
Yeah, we don't count that in calculations.
Looks fantastic. Your company designed this?
Yes, sir.
Looks fantastic.
I'm wondering about the other neighbors, though. They have to look at a six-foot tall barrier with your, the stove and the oven and the kitchen area. Is that correct?
Technically, yes.
Okay. So looking at a six-foot stone wall, where does that end? How far from the water?
Um, the, the end of the bar island would be within, uh, second here, thirteen feet.
How the drawings?
Oh, okay.
So the way this, the way that we designed this to try to eliminate as much of this non-conformance as possible is the door wall of the house sits thirty inches above grade. So at the door wall, we have to build up or install a large set of steps. So we're only coming out from the door wall, um, six feet. And then the patio will step down to reduce the overall height. And the kitchen also steps down with the patio. So it's not going to be, you know, an eighteen-foot, six-foot wall. That's going to be, you know, we're doing, we're trying to accomplish a goal, but also do it as tastefully as possible and work with the elevations given to achieve, you know, the end result.
I'm, yeah, I'm not concerned about your side. Your side's beautiful. It's the neighbors' adjacent. And they're going to have a huge wall in front of their property. They're going to be looking at a, you know, a six-foot wall. They're not looking at a stove and an oven and a pizza cooking area. I mean, they're really going to have a big, um, big brick wall, I guess is the best way to say it, block wall.
I mean, I don't know how detailed the, you know, that you, how much detail you can gather from the drawing provided, but this isn't a cinder block or an industrial wall. This is a very decorative, almost like a cultured stone finish, you know. So as much as I understand what you're saying, we're not going to go out and just build a plain block wall and paint it white or leave it cinder block. It's, it is very decorative. It's finished completely all the way around on all sides.
But it obscures the view, correct? How much of it? You say it's not eighteen feet of wall, six feet high. How much is six feet high?
The first six feet.
What's the dimension for the remaining portion of the kitchen, most definitely on that to the water? What's that elevation then?
I'm sorry, sir?
What's the height of the remaining portion of the outdoor kitchen beyond the six-foot that you had said? Because you says it's six-foot high, the first six feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Then I, so the first six feet, and then the kitchen continues towards the water?
Correct.
For another twenty-one feet, according to this drawing? What is the height for
How, how high is the elevation of the patio from coming out of the house into the one closest to the water? Because it looks like there's four steps between that?
Correct.
What's the difference in elevation between those two?
I think we're close to twenty inches at, well, when we get all the way down to the water, it'll be, it'll be at C-wall height.
I'm just sorry. Do we need railings there, Brent?
No, okay.
Thirty inches from grade. Yeah, my biggest objection on this is the kitchen area. I'm just troubled by it. I, I'm wondering if that could go more on the property in the back of the tiki bar or some other area?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood.
You're, I'm troubled by having the six-foot, you know, the neighbor looking at the six-foot back of appliances or back of your kitchen area. Is it possible to put that kitchen area on the back of the tiki bar or some area where you could stop, you could eliminate the blockage from the neighbor?
I think some of the components could be incorporated into the bar built around the pavilion, but I think it'd be difficult to achieve moving everything to that area.
Could the tiki bar even be extended or whatever to, and move towards the center and then take over all those cooking tasks?
Well, I mean, I think at a minimum, we'd like to utilize the six feet of usable space we do have there at the house. I mean, for convenience alone, being able to, you know, especially in the winter months, be able to walk right out the door wall. This house has a balcony from the second floor that covers the first six feet of the patio. So by positioning these items close to the house, it allows them to be used all year round.
Okay. I guess you're not getting me. I'm trying to explain that, that if we could do something that would centralize the, the, the stuff that tends to be higher and tends to be blocking, you know, if there's a way to, you know, so it doesn't affect your neighbors.
I mean, again, I think we can move certain elements to, to the bar island if the customer, you know, if the client decides, or if that's the only option we have, that, you know, we'd have to kind of go back to the design board and see how do we position things in the bar or in the pavilion bar. Yeah, I'm sure there's, there's other possibilities. This is, you know, the most desired layout for the kitchen. Again, I think we do have some usable space there, right adjacent to the house, that we could, you know, maybe do something small. But beyond that, it's, it's up, you know, we're looking for the variance to, you know, come out a little further past the face of the house in six feet.
Have the homeowners discuss this with their neighbors?
Yeah, actually, could I come up there? Sure.
Yeah. Do you want to give us your name and address?
Yeah.
We just need all that so we can have a talk.
Robert Lowery, three seven six eight five Lakeville Street. What I was saying as I was talking to John, if I had to eliminate on those plans, there's a pizza oven and a sink next to that, that would give roughly another twelve to fourteen feet that I would be happy to eliminate. So we'd still have the six feet of, there's a outside grill and like a small hibachi grill. I don't know the exact length, but again, on the end, I'd be willing to forego the pizza oven and the sink. So that would give us another twelve to fourteen feet.
That's good information for us, but have you discussed this with your neighbor? They may not have a problem with this.
Yeah, my neighbor's right here, Deb.
Yeah, I mean, if the neighbor doesn't have a problem with this, is that solving part of this problem?
I, I just wanted to confirm the final plans. They have, we have talked a lot and we're okay going out a bit.
If we're going to have the neighbor speak, you're going to have to come to the volume?
Yeah.
You ever seen the interviews?
Hi. My name is Deborah Piper. I live at three seven six nine five Lakeville. I'm just on the right side. So we have talked and we are comfortable with going out a little bit with that, that kitchen wall, I guess it'd be the grill and the hibachi oven. I have not seen the final plans, though, so I did want to just confirm what the final plans were. I saw some iterations of them.
This is kind of.
Okay.
What we were going to propose.
Okay, so they don't have the pizza oven and stuff in there?
Right.
Yeah, so I, we just wanted to confirm what the final distance variance was on that. I think Rob was just telling me fourteen feet out, and it's a lot of variance. You have six feet to work with, so that's, what, eight additional feet out? Is there any?
When we redesigned this based on the dimensions of these, these particular appliances, this kitchen would actually be, I have this spec'd out, sixteen feet. So I know me and Rob, we're trying to shrink it down to fourteen, but to get a gas line in for this and this, we had to add another two feet. So that's, that's about as, as small as I could make that to fit those appliances in there.
Ms. Piper, you understand why we're doing this, right?
Yes, understand.
You don't want to look at the back of a block wall. I mean, I assume you don't give a go, I don't know.
No. Rob, how far does your deck currently go?
Let me just show you this too. I can show you guys, I don't know if you hear this, but.
Yeah.
So right now, the way it's set up from the, right at the house, we have the grill out to the, towards the C-wall is twenty-six feet, ten inches. I think if I eliminated that pizza oven and that sink.
It takes off.
What do you think roughly?
It's ten feet.
Oh, ten feet.
Yeah, it's dimensions.
So come out sixteen feet instead of twenty-six.
Right.
Um, oh, here's what it would look like here, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to visualize the distance.
You know how far out that would be, right?
From our house. Do you have any?
Because right now, we have, we've always had this portion. It would just be the sink, which is what, two feet?
Three. Two, yeah, it's an eighteen.
So basically, you're anywhere at that now, but three feet more.
And I think that's acceptable. Were you doing a sibachi grill, though?
Yeah, so we're just going to do these two, eliminate the pizza oven and eliminate the sink.
So it's only three feet further than what you.
Than it is now, yeah. Yeah, because we have always had this grill and this refrigerator.
Correct.
It'd just be the three feet for this oven.
Yes, okay. Yeah, and that's what's been there. And they've actually had plans and everything, so we accept that.
And she's the one who should use it.
So you're okay with the updated plan?
Yes.
As long as you make some.
As long as, and that's why I just wanted to confirm what the updated plan is in the distance. And so if that's what's being approved, then yes.
Ms. Piper, what was your address again?
Three seven six nine five Lakeville.
Thank you.
So what are we being asked to look at now? Because it was six feet out, six feet high, six feet from the house.
Correct.
Then it drops to five feet out for a distance and ends up at the C-wall, correct? C-wall height?
No, not five.
Five feet high, sixty inches?
Well, once it, yeah, once, once it steps down, so there's a step in the patio. It's essentially, it's a three-tiered patio, which is very similar. The client homeowner had a wood deck, or has a wood deck there, that this is almost a remove and replace of the current existing layout. We wanted to make the kitchen a little bit bigger. You know, unfortunately, we're probably not going to be able to do that, but we're willing to, you know, modify some things to, you know, to try to get the project on, you know, moving forward.
The question previously was the remaining twenty-one feet, you said was sixty inches high, ending at C-wall height?
No, it doesn't go all the way. So there's twenty-one feet, but then there's still space from the end of the kitchen to the C-wall.
With no wall.
With no wall at all, correct.
And that's thirty inches high?
I'm sorry?
And that's the portion that's thirty inches high?
Uh, no, at that point, we'll be stepping down to below twenty-four inches.
So this is the revised plan, all right? What you're speaking to now is something we don't have here.
Correct. Our plan B was, is to eliminate the last ten feet of that kitchen to bring this thing in. I have, I actually have some renderings of what that could look like, if you'd like to take a look at them.
You know, what would be helpful to me is to see a side view of how much at this, how much at this, where it ends, and now there's nothing, and then the C-wall.
I believe that is.
Is it in here? Did I miss?
I believe.
I thought I saw, up in the corner, I thought I saw something at one point, but I can't find it now.
Well, you have a plan view. Do we have an elevation view?
That's what I'm looking, I saw, I thought I saw.
Did you say you have the revised plan, removing the, could you give us a revised pass down here? And that would eliminate the pizza oven on the sink?
That's correct.
And the question that I would have, though, is how does it impact requested variances? Right now, we're, it's being asked, there's a twenty-seven foot, a request for a twenty-seven foot variance, that's what I see. So we're going down to then what? And, Mr. Chairman, I, we need to talk about how we formalize that this evening in terms of what we're, what we're being asked and what we're, you know, what's being presented and what we're being asked to do.
The other thing that we have to keep in mind is the bar is still going to be over thirty inches from grade, within thirty feet of the C-wall. We're talking about the sensitivity of the setbacks and other cases that we've had come before us previously. They have the fireplace in the back and they have the bar. They're all over four feet. I don't know about the bar, or the fireplace.
Yeah, that's, that's less.
But the bar is going to be four feet. But the bar is gonna be four feet of height.
Right. And then my question would be, this variance going 27 feet out and at some point, five feet to six feet high, the new request would be for something less than that. Although you're, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Condon, that it would still be, well, the visual impact of that. So I guess before I could think about it further, I would need much more clarification about exactly what we're being asked.
I think he's got an updated plan that will at least address the kitchen side.
This would be, to Ms. Thorpe's question, this would be the less elevation drawing I have for the shorter layout of the kitchen. Obviously, it doesn't go out as far as the water, but you know, water would be out here.
Yeah, and we can kind of connect the dots here.
John, what is, what is this setting?
The real question in my mind becomes, you know, this distance, you know, where, how far is the, you know, so the obscuring, how far does the obscuring portion of this project go into the 30-foot requirement? I don't know how else I can say that.
That's, that's well said.
And, you know, so did you?
No, I'm sorry.
So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand, under the revised plan, we're talking about obscuring view.
Yes.
So how far does, does it now, the portion that is now five feet high, how far does that extend into the required setback? So it's supposed to be?
10 feet.
10 feet.
Correct.
And in the previous plan, it was?
26 feet.
26 feet.
Uh, I'm sorry, it was 20 feet.
20 feet.
Well, we were essentially asking for a 20-foot variance. If we eliminate the furthest part of the kitchen, it would be a 10-foot variance for the kitchen area.
When you say kitchen area though, that's the end of it though.
Correct. But I guess the reason I said that is because from my understanding and working with Brent on this project, there are several components of this project that would require a variance, the kitchen being one of them. But the pavilion, which is in the center of the patio, was intended to have a bar from post to post all the way around three of the four sides, almost all four sides. And that was going to have a seating bar around it, which is also, to my knowledge, non-conforming, correct? Okay.
If you look at page 16, he's got an aerial view on it. They're proposing to take off two of the items on the bar, which would reduce the bar by 10 feet. However, the pavilion and the bar area that he's talking about would be within the 30 feet, correct, John?
Correct.
And then there's the fireplace out front by the canal. But what's, from your neighbor's grade, how tall would that be?
The fireplace?
Yeah.
I believe it is, I believe 42 inches. Because the, 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 uh, 36, 44 inches, I'm sorry, 44 inches at the top of bar. The fireplace, fire pit nearest the canal is designed as a, like a bar, where you can sit around it with a linear fire pit in it. So it would be bar stool height.
Right. So I'm just trying to help them understand it a little bit too, because the ordinance isn't gonna say a fireplace. It's gonna say you're blocking the view.
Right.
So if they're gonna go for a variance, we want to include the fireplace by the canal and the furthest point out for the pavilion and the bar. So that's the question that Mr. Batani is asking, you know, what is that dimension from the bar wall to the lake or to the canal?
Right, so that gives him my setback, right?
Yes.
It very, I mean, ordinance 30 feet, what are we asking for? Right.
Hopefully, he can get that answer.
Is there an elevation drawing that the gentleman brought over? Because this is not.
That's the side elevation for the kitchen area. Brent, to answer your question, the closest point of the pavilion bar to the water is approximately 18 feet.
So that reduces your request for variance, right? So you were at 27. 27. Now you're down to 12. How does it reduce it 15 feet though?
Right. Well, I'm not really sure, because I'll be quite honest with you, when I filled out this paperwork, I was kind of confused as to how to calculate the variance of what you're asking for, if you're taking away from, from what's there or if you're adding to what, what is usable, right?
So, Brent, I guess looking on page 17, page number 17. I'm referring back to the site plan that was submitted, it's marked up. Which says, if I add up the string of dimensions, it is 40 feet from the edge of the project back to the face of the house. Is that a true assessment? And I'm just, I'm just trying to get some basic dimensions to start answering the question. Is that true? The site plan certainly appears to suggest that that's the case. Is that true?
So, correct me for not being, not understanding, knowing the directions on this house, but if I was standing at the water, looking back at the house.
Yes.
The right side of the house is 40 feet from the water, the left side is 36 feet from the water. The house has a bay window door wall that protrudes from the house approximately four feet.
Standing at the water.
I'm with you on the 40 feet.
Okay, we'll see that, because it's dimensioned right here, so that was.
Yep.
Okay.
He's saying 15 feet to the bar.
So what I wanted to do first was maybe to help myself and maybe rest here, on that same page, number 17, you could start from the edge of the project and go over 30 feet, snap the line, and anything that's taller than 24 inches requires variance. Is that a true assessment of how this, what it comes down to?
Is it 24 inches or 30 inches? The variant, what would then require a variance?
It's 30 feet.
30 feet, but at what height after 30 feet?
It says it has to be non-obscuring.
Okay, oh, so there is no actual dimension to it?
Well, I know, because we've been, we've been trying to clarify this language in the zoning amendments. Currently, what it says is it was, can't be higher than four feet and it can't be anymore opaque to 50%, right? So, given, given other, given at least one recent case that was seen here at the ZBA, there was debate there, as well at PC, as we started to perfect some of those ordinance, that 50% of four feet can be defined as two feet of solid. Right? I think you probably are aware of some of that debate that was going on. So that's what I was saying, given that this is 100% solid, to me, that's where I was just thinking, I go 30 feet back, snap the line, and anything taller than 24 inches of solid project becomes the variance. This is where I was trying to visualize what this is. So that means now to, I guess, those words are actually pretty solid there, you snap the line and fundamentally, if you look on page 17, just for a visual, you can see there's a dimension that says 10 foot six, it's being dimensioned to, fairly adjacent to a stair that exits the grade, do you see that? So you can kind of visually take that line just for sake of visualizing what this means and just kind of extend that line up. Extend it up to the project to get a good sense for what portion of the project is necessary to be evaluated for the variance. Because after the first 30 feet, there was no restriction on height or opacity or anything, right?
It's six feet.
The six feet deal then?
Yeah.
But that could be opaque.
Can I ask one other question just to get, while we're on this drawing? Is, I'm comparing this with drawing number 05. Is the front of the, the bar here, is that, there's no seating area in that?
I'm sorry, can you show me?
Yeah. He's saying right here, there's no seats here?
That's correct. Only on the side.
Let me ask a dumb question. Why couldn't we put the cooking area in front of, in front of the bar there? It's unused space.
I guess my question to the board would be, regardless of where we put the appliances in this project, I mean, I'll move the appliances wherever they need to be into whatever is approved, but to Mr. Baca's point, the pavilion, the bar around the pavilion still requires a variance. So I guess I would need the variance approved for the, to build the bar and essentially, or in hopes, the bar top height fireplace as well, or fire pit as well. And then we can, you know, now we have some usable space to move these appliances too, but I don't know, that makes sense to brainstorm where to put things until I know what's.
Understood. And, okay, then let's get on that. What's acceptable as far as a bar size, I mean, from my perspective and from your perspective? This is unusual, we haven't done this, like this before. Do you need all that space for the bar or is there a different way we could?
I mean, we do a lot of work in this township and, you know, I've worked on other projects that are very similar to this. I think it's kind of, it's a industry standard for this amount of space. We're not, we're not building anything that is too big for the space, but I think if we made it any smaller, it wouldn't really be usable or functional to that degree.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we're, you know, the dilemma that we're getting into here is we're trying to design something at the meeting. And I don't know that we can do that. I don't want to be presumptuous. It sounds to me like we would entertain some form of variance. I mean, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth here, but it sounds to me like we would entertain some form of variance. I think I could, it'd be safe to say, we would not entertain the one that's been presented here this evening, just taking a guess. And is, is there a way to give some sort of direction to the applicant here to bring back a plan that would be within a reasonable degree of getting a variance to that? I don't know how else to phrase that.
You seem to bring up a good point, Mr. Batani.
Yeah.
From my perspective, I think, I think the high stuff needs to be centralized in the, on the site so it doesn't penalize the, you know, the neighbors, so the tiki, the bar, whatever. They need to be, moves a little bit more towards the center of the site and other tall things move towards the center of the site. And, you know, it's more open on the sides. That's just, I mean, conceptually, that's, that's my thinking. I don't know if there's a better way to explain that or other people have other suggestions on that.
I mean, if I, if I could, it sounds like after this design plan, this design plan was presented to the neighbors, one obviously has no concern at all. The other who's here seems that if we can shorten that kitchen, the 10 feet we've discussed, that she'd be more than happy with the way everything else has been proposed. So I would ask that, and I think Brent kind of recalculated some of the numbers, but I would ask that we consider approving the variance as Brent calculated with a kitchen that's 10 foot shorter and the pavilion and the fire pit bars as designed.
Does he math correctly? He needs a 15-foot variance.
Right, so the original variance, just going back to the proposal, 27 feet, that was the original proposal of the variance?
17 feet. 17 feet.
I'm sorry.
I think the kitchen overall was 26 or 27 feet.
I thought that, I thought the original.
Yeah, certainly.
Right, it's 17 feet, yeah, guys, because if you look at the site plan, it's the 13 plus the 17 equals 30.
So we're looking, and now, now, and now, so it was 17 feet and now it is?
Would be 10 feet less than, right?
Yes.
Because if you're pushing it back.
On the bar side, it would be 10 foot less than that, so he would only really need a three-foot variance for the bar side.
Okay.
Only, I'm sorry, the kitchen countertop side.
Okay.
Yep.
The bar area per his site plan on the, that was submitted, is 15 feet away. Here. So that's your new number, 15 feet. So that means that he would need a 15-foot variance for the bar. So if you're granting up to a 15-foot variance, the kitchen complies at that point, in my opinion.
And how far at that point are we from the water's edge?
Where, to what?
From, from the 15 foot, from that point, that's, that's heading, is this, am I heading towards the water this way?
Yep.
How far is it this, this point?
It's 15 feet.
It's 15 feet.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right, 15.
That's right.
True, your last statement, Brent, was true, that once you granted a 15, if you did, then the other one became academic. But that's true, but to me, as we are starting to talk about thought process here, I was personally more concerned about the kitchen and that the big wall adjacent to a property as opposed to the bar, which is inboard property and kind of terraces back, probably less intrusive to the neighbor. So it's still, to me, the kitchen was really, kitchen to me is more important than the bar.
Is it possible to look at a step variance where the kitchen is held shorter and the bar, pavilion bar is allowable? I mean, we're here to make the neighbor as happy as the homeowner, right? And if she's okay with us shrinking that kitchen by 10 feet and the pavilion bar being where it's at, I don't know how we draw that up for an approval, but I'm more than happy to build it that way.
So what's the, what is acceptable for an accessory structure in the rear yard? What setbacks to accessory structures required?
Same, it's 30 feet.
Same 30 feet?
Yeah. So what John is saying, you'd have a 23-foot setback to the kitchen that would require a 7-foot variance. You could make a motion to say 7-foot variance for the kitchen countertop, 15-foot variance for the bar.
So there's, so we're talking about two different dimensions. And is there, and I have to ask, is there a difference in the the visual impact of the bar area, and I apologize for not being able to see this.
Nope.
Is there a difference in the visual impact of the bar area versus the kitchen area? In other words, my, my neighbor's looking at, so the bar area is going out further. Is there a difference then?
The bar area is in the middle of the lot.
The bar is shorter than the kitchen.
Yeah, your side yard setback would be changing. So your kitchen bar, you know, the, where the appliances are.
Right.
Kitchen countertop is six feet off the property line. Your bar area might be, what, 12 approximately off the property line?
Correct.
Because this is all about visibility, right? This, that's what we're talking about. The ordinance is there to help protect the notion of being able to see out, that's why people have bought there. And so I'm trying to visualize through that in an attempt to still work with the property owners. A beautiful design, looks great.
Thank you.
You know, we'd like to do something that accommodates that, but still preserve the neighbor's right to see.
Yeah, yeah, no, I completely understand.
I think you're asking how much, how much wall, obscuring wall, is there going to be associated with the bar? How high?
I'm sorry.
Is there an obscuring wall? Is there a spance of obscuring wall that is going to be by the bar? Or is it just out there on its own?
So the bar is built under the pavilion. I'm not sure I'm answering your question correctly, but the bar is built under the pavilion.
Ms. Piper, do you want to come up and say something?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, so I am on the right side of their property and I am on the side.
Which is the kitchen side, sorry.
The kitchen side with the obscuring wall. The way our house is laid out and the way we sit, we have a covered patio on the back of our house and it's on the far side. So when we're sitting in our normal.
By far side, you mean away from them?
Away from them. So when we're actually sitting where we always sit, we don't, we can't see how far out that goes. So when we're actually sitting where we always sit, we don't, we can't see how far out that goes. So it doesn't obscure our view if they take that ten foot variance on that kitchen side. That's acceptable for us.
That's good to know, because I, actually, I have the same question.
Because we actually all sat there, looked and like based on where we sit. I even see the neighbors, they have these lifts and stuff in their yard that distract, that obscure my view. So whether it's that or the wall, if they go over there, it doesn't make a difference. Where we sit, it does not impact it.
You still want steps so you can go to their patio and have the, uh, the hot dogs?
But, yeah, so that kitchen side is, at that variance, you guys were talking about that. I just wanted to reiterate that we're good with that part.
And the neighbor on the other side has no issue?
No, when he said he signed the paper, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, he said he would sign a paper or do whatever he had to, because I had a gazebo there. It was just like this, but it was bolted to my deck, so it wasn't a fixed permanent structure, but. Yeah, I've had a gazebo there for twenty years.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have none.
Is there anyone else, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion, but I'm so far in the weeds with all these variances.
Is everyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this case this evening? Here now, we'll close the, uh, uh, open session, open portion of the meeting, go to board discussion. Board members, any comments or questions?
For sake of clarification, the kitchen wall is going to extend how many feet outside of the face of the existing building? Sounded like it was seventeen feet, did I hear that correct?
And John, that'll be after it's shortened.
Correct.
This is the new proposal.
The, the new proposal, um, yes, you are correct.
Okay. And then as far as the, the bar or the fire pit, is there anything that we need to do on those? Board members?
So I, I believe on the updated proposal, we're looking at a fifteen foot variance on the bar side. And on the other side, where the kitchen side would be, there would be a seven foot variance.
Is it seven? For the kitchen?
I think it's at seventeen from the face of the.
That's, that's a dimension that's.
He's, he's currently on the site plan, it shows thirteen feet as a setback. He's going to increase that setback by ten feet, which is twenty-three.
Yeah.
You gotta be thirty, so it's seventeen.
But can, can we, I don't remember in the past us splitting up the variances, in other words, from, from a, a, a certain point on the property line. Have we done that in the past?
Yeah.
We have, okay, alright. So I, I guess we'd want the, the proposal to be that specific then?
Yeah, say on the, this is north, so, you know, northwest, unless northwest whatever wall and then the south, southeast or whatever wall, whatever makes easiest to explain. Any, any other discussion, board members?
I still do.
Mr. Baca?
For sake of clarification again, I'll ask, I mean, who can answer this, but so you said it's a, it's a three level terrace deck, correct? You got the first level that serves the patio door and the immediate kitchen.
Correct.
You have the next level which has the, um, fire pit and the bar.
The, the pavilion and the bed, yes, that's correct.
The pavilion and the fire pit, and then you have the next level, which includes just some furniture, but it also includes a, a fixed structure too. That doesn't, that's not part of this.
Well, that's, that's the, that's not a fireplace.
Yeah, which is solid structure also, yeah.
The fireplace and the bar.
Okay, so that, that was part of the, but with us defining what the, what the pavilion was, that would take that into account. So, so my question is, looking at those three levels, the mid-level, uh, which is the fire pit pavilion level.
Correct.
What is that elevation from grade? Because I'm looking at it right here and it strikes me that it's more than twenty-four inches. Because I see three, I see three row block and then some type of a, a paper course. So let's pick the number twenty-eight inches, am I seeing that correctly? On page, drawing, page five, it clearly tells me that it's greater than twenty-four inches.
I'll pick it's all your block.
Uh, this particular material is six inches.
So it's eighteen plus your top.
Okay, so that, so this, it would've been really nice if this had dimensions to it. It would help a lot, us through a lot of this conversation. Alright, so that, that is, so fundamentally then, Brent, uh, and I know we got there, but I'm, I'm also thinking about, how, how'd you phrase it, how do you properly articulate it? So what I just heard then is all of this, all the decks are, are all within the ordinance, right? If you had a dimension, we could say yes, no, right now, or. Alright, so we're, we're still just.
Mid-tier, there's going to be twenty-four inches from grade, because you have four courses of block.
Correct.
Right, if it's six inch, that's fine. Got it, so we're, we're, we're still focused on pavilion and kitchen. Alright.
Do you have the language to? Do we need to separate?
Well, we, we're dealing with, you know, the, the setback variance, right? And, um, the maximum height variance, we're still have, do we have any difference on that, that request for the maximum height?
I would say no, because it falls into the same ordinance.
Right.
It's a sixteen foot, is it the sixteen foot max for accessory structure?
No, the max, the maximum height, wall height.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So aren't we, aren't we, if, if we were going to move in this direction, are we talking about a, a motion that would direct a two-part setback variance of fifteen feet and seven feet and somehow document which side of the property that was on? And approve the height variance, I mean, if that's what we have in mind? The seven foot variance would be the kitchen side, right? However, that gets documented. Mr. Baca, is that kind of what you're thinking, or?
I believe so, yes. But let me ask Brent. The pavilion, being that, right now the pavilion, I, I don't believe we're getting hung up with the, with the height of the pavilion or the product. It's just that it's built within the thirty foot setback, right? Isn't that the reason?
Are you talking about the overall height to the roof?
No, I'm just talking about the pavilion itself, isn't that the issue? Are we getting, are we getting hung up with the fact that it's?
Well, the, the bar walls itself are going to be exceeding the allowable limit.
I thought that limit was only for property line.
You couldn't build a garage in the middle, middle of the property?
Right, that's where I'm going with it, because you can't build any type of accessory structure in the thirty foot setback, right? You would need a variance, if you wanted to build a garage back there, right? You needed a, just a rear yard setback to build a garage, right? It had nothing to do with the material or anything else, just that, I want to build it, ordinance says nothing in the thirty feet. I want to build a garage, that's fine, I get it. Then you want to build it fifteen feet, then you're, you need a fifteen foot setback, it's just a pure rear yard setback.
Yes, yes, yes.
The, the fireplace is falling under the ordinance that says, um, the perimeter of the property, you cannot build a, a structure taller than four feet that obscures more than fifty percent. So I think they're two, they're not, they're not, I don't think they're getting hung up the same, um, ordinance as it pertains to the, the opacity and the product. I, am I missing it then Brent, is it made, I'm trying to simplify that, it's just like, do we feel comfortable building a pavilion fifteen feet from the water?
Can I, can I ask a question?
That's as simple as a, as a, as an observation, right?
From, from my understanding, and Brent corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe you and I had discussed this, the pavilion, if it had no bar, would be allowable, because it's just four posts. And it, I understand it's an accessory structure, but it's, there's no walls to it, so it's slightly different than the idea of a garage.
Right.
So pavilion or no pavilion, I don't believe that the pavilion is, is of question when it comes to the ordinance. I believe it's just the height of the wall that surrounds the pavilion or goes from post to post on the pavilion.
That, that's just an opinion, is that any of a part of this conversation, right?
Not the pavilion, the, the walls of the bar, under the pavilion are.
So we're back to that then? I only tried to make it simple.
And I didn't mean to overcomplicate, I just don't want to, yeah, from my understanding, when we first submitted the, you know, the, the original building permit application and then the ZVA, it was all about the height of the fixed structures, the bar and the kitchen. The, the pavilion was just, you know, I could take the pavilion away and I'd still be non-conforming. It's the, the bar itself, not the pavilion that's the issue.
That's what I understood, I understood.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page here.
Got it, just a slight detour.
Or get their own way or another.
No doubt.
Any other discussion, board members? Is there anyone like to make a motion this evening?
Well, Brent, maybe, so a motion would, would talk about a setback variance of seven feet and fifteen feet. Would there be a way to, uh, properly identify which side of the property the fifteen foot variance would be on versus the seven foot, do we have to get that specific? This is all we're doing, right?
I, I feel like you could simply say, I approve, deny the variance request for a fifteen foot rear yard setback to the bars, to the bar wall, and a seven foot setback to the kitchen countertop.
That's what I was going to propose, you want me to do that?
Yeah, that's.
Approve or deny, you fill in the blank, that's up to you guys.
We all know what it has to be, we understand what it has to be, this just clarifies, you know, puts some language behind it. So I think, I think that's good.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, can I do that?
Sure, go for it.
I'll make a motion to approve a seven foot variance on the kitchen side of the patio and a fifteen foot variance on the bar side of the patio for the project as an update, shortening the kitchen, um, by, what, is it twelve feet?
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
Okay, is there, uh, is there approval for the motion?
I'll support that.
Motion by Mr. Abrado, supported by Mr. Batanti, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Baca?
A fifteen foot variance for the pavilion, got it, we're past that previous leg. I, I still have, I'm struggling, isn't there another, this elevated, what's it tall, the U-Cara bar with gas fire pit? That's taller than two feet, doesn't that require a, a massive variance too? Because that's even closer to the, that's even closer to the lake.
That's up to your interpretation, I guess, I mean, for me, I, I think that you gave that fifteen foot setback to the bar, you could include the fireplace or just make note to allow the fireplace within that fifteen feet. Because you're giving them a fifteen foot setback and that fireplace is going to be within that fifteen feet.
So it said that after the first fifteen feet, you can now build this pavilion to the height that's drawn.
Correct.
But anything shorter than the fifteen feet is not allowed to be taller than two feet. Is that true, according to that variance?
Correct.
So doesn't that fall within that criteria?
Yeah, I just don't know how to add it to it, I was, I was thinking that we could include it just because you're allowing the fifteen feet.
It's within the fifteen feet, right.
So within the fifteen feet, it can be five, that wall can, or the bar can be five feet high? It isn't, but it's the feet.
Marsh is trying to figure out how to include the fireplace.
But I'm concerned about the height of the wall.
The, I believe the wall that, that you're talking about is not the same wall that he's talking, not the same.
He's talking about the fireplace itself.
I'm talking about the, it had four chairs sitting around it.
Correct.
And, and that, so we'll call it something else, but bottom line is, it obscures.
Okay, I apologize, I thought, I thought you were still talking about the, the taller wall for the kitchen.
When it obscures the view, I call it.
Well, I, I just, I, I just wanted, it's discussion, I get it. I, I just, it's, maybe, maybe it's academic, because I mean, I know what we, what we're trying to achieve. But in, in reality, where's that dimension?
Do you want me to amend the motion to include the fire pit?
So, so in reality, if I look at page seventeen, so just stick with me for a second, um, it shows that the face, just using the mentions that are on drawing seventeen, it shows that the linear fire box, or lack of a better word, firewall, it shows that the face of that is five feet, ten inches from property line, right? Which is in violation of the ordinance.
Yes.
And as drawn, it would be the twenty-four foot, two, two inch variance, right? So, uh, do you see where I was fishing with this then? What do I was fishing with this, just somehow find a way to, to capture that, because I don't think in what was stated, that left that out there hanging yet, that was, that was not going to be acceptable per the motion, I believe.
So let me, let me, let me ask this question then. What's, and let me ask it this way, what's the, the furthest point that this project will extend out from the, out from the house? I, I'm, it, it sounds to me like we're still going to have fifteen feet to the block, to the shoreline.
So, so I think one of the things that's hard to understand in this case is, when, when we're talking about these variances, are we, when you ask, or when, when, when we're asking for a fifteen foot variance, is that extending the usable space from the face of the house out an additional fifteen feet? And if that's the case, if that is a true statement, then we would need to extend out further to allow, to make the fireplace near the lake allowable, because the outside edge, the furthest point of the fireplace or the fire pit, um, to the face of the house is approximately thirty-four feet.
So I believe.
Does that kind of follow your, your train of thought, Mr. Baca? Is that what you're saying?
No, because I'm measuring from property line, that's the dimension of the house.
So when you're saying property line, you're coming from the water back?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Um, I, I believe that a third leg of the motion needs to be added, which is to grant a variance for the, and I would use the words that's on the drawing, which was called a, uh, unilock, u, what is it called?
Carara.
Carara bar.
That's, that's the product line.
Alright. And that's going to be a twenty-four foot, two inch variance, that way it can be placed in that spot.
Eukara fire pit?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion and add an additional twenty-four foot, two inch variance to accommodate the Eukara fire pit. On the bar side. So we're specifically putting that on the bar side.
Correct.
Okay, is there support for a motion?
Continued support, Mr. Batanti?
Mr. Batanti, do you?
Honestly, I'm having trouble now visualizing, I just, I, I thought we were, I thought we had our variances, a fifteen foot variance and a seven foot variance. Brent's going to draw me out of here.
Well. And I was talking about, this is, this is a fire pit, this is a bar.
So you're, you're drawing, your other drawing.
Right, Mr. Baca wants to include the fireplace and not include the fireplace.
And at what, so show me on this drawing where the fireplace is at. So it's within.
Correct, so that's what he's saying is, he needs a twenty-four foot, two inch variance for that.
To build that, that, that fireplace.
He just wants to be sure that he's covered.
Okay. Yeah, we just need your continued support. Alright.
I, I, I agree, I, I think it's very consistent with our intent. I just believe that that, that was left hanging, that let's just get it tidied up the right way.
Continued support.
Okay, amended support by, um, Mr. Batanti. Any discussion of the amended motion?
Yes, the twenty-four foot variance brings it very close to the water. How high is it? Have I lost it all in all of this?
That particular item that's closest to the water is designed to be forty-two inches tall.
And twenty-four inches is allowable by the water line, so that...
And that's why that needs to be...
The surface is rusting up?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
So the, the variance for the setback doesn't cover the height of that?
Yes, it does.
That's, that's what we're given, the variance too, is to section six point oh one, which dictates the height. I, I have other discussion, although it's going to be simpler this time.
Okay, Mr. Bajra?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to spin this around. And perhaps you could just say you'll address this during final, um, permit. But with, with that linear fire box only five feet from the edge of the water, doesn't that going to require some type of railing or something, or, that's awfully close to pulling your chair out and just... But you'll, my question was, you'll address that during, when they submit for the permit?
Yes, but I don't think it's going to be required, yeah.
It had no impact on this, I just was intrigued about, for safety.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Out of objection, we'll close the, uh, discussion, we'll go to, uh, I will do, Mr. Batanti, when you, to roll call, please.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Batanti, yes, and Mr....
Yes.
Mr. Bajra?
Yes.
Mr. Leyland?
Yes, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Was it?
Thank you.
Make sure you update your site plan and try to make sure...
The next day of the agenda was old business, it's very old business this evening. Any new business? Any announcements? I'd like to recognize my daughter, Lori Leyland, who's been sitting through this meeting, she wanted to see you.
Patiently.
Patiently.
Yes, Mary Queen's in your future, I think.
So thank you, Mary, thank you for doing this. Any public comment? Our next meeting is August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, leaving us alone, thank you, everyone.